All right, we are being live streamed. We can move forward.
Okay, welcome everyone. This is Thursday, September 9th, 2021. It is about 1:06 PM and we are starting the special meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to have a public hearing concerning some Goal 18 exceptions. First item on our agenda is to call the meeting to order. I have done so. We are now in order. We have a quorum. All three commissioners, myself, Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Jacobson are present. Next item is our public hearing, and this is to consider requests by Seeridge Condominiums, case number 01-LUPC-21, Club Worldmark, case number 02-LUPC-21, Edward and Joan Tannaby, Richard and Sally Grant, Sally and Janice De Silvia, and Sherry Kane, case number 03-LUPC-21, for amendments to the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan. I will go over the hearing procedures. Before I do that, Assistant County Council Herbage, anything to add at this point?
No, I think you're on cue. I think in the ordinances, it gives more complete names for the applications. And it was Terry and Janice De Silvia, and let me make a quick look.
Well, the statement that I have has more details, which is why I hesitated for a moment when I was reading the agenda.
Yeah, and so let me look at this one thing here for a second. And on Kane, it's what I have is Sherry Kane and Peter Kane, trustees of the George Kane Irrevocable Trust. So anyway, you're fine, you're on cue, and I think you're ready to go through the procedure.
Okay, this is, or these are, this is a public hearing for case files 01-LUPC-21, and 03-LUPC-21, Seeridge Condominiums, Club Worldmark, and Ed and Joan Tannaby, Richard and Sally Grant, Sherry and Peter Kane, trustees of the Peter Kane Irrevocable Trust, and Terry and Janice De Silvia as applicants. First thing I will do is open the hearing. We are now in public hearing. Do any commissioners wish to declare conflicts, biases, or ex parte contacts?
None from me.
None from me.
And none from me. So this is a public hearing to consider the recommendation from the Lincoln County Planning Commission to approve the requests by Seeridge Condominiums, case number 01-LUPC-21, Club Worldmark, case number 02-LUPC-21, and Ed and Joan Tannaby, Richard and Sally Grant, Sherry and Peter Kane, trustees of the George Kane Irrevocable Trust, and Terry and Janice De Silvia, case number 03-LUPC-21, for amendments to the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan. The proposed amendments would adopt exceptions to statewide planning Goal 18, implementation requirement five. The effect of these exceptions, if adopted, would be to authorize the placement of beachfront protective structures on the subject properties, subject to the approval of a permit from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. Placement of beachfront protective structures on the subject properties is otherwise prohibited. The properties are all located within the Lincoln County Glen Eden Beach area, excuse me, within the Lincoln Glen Eden Beach area of Lincoln County. There was no appeal of the Planning Commission's decision and recommendation on this request, but because this matter involves goal exceptions, the Board of Commissioners is also required to hold a public hearing, which we are doing today. In a moment, Council Herbage will describe the hearing procedures. Please be advised that the Board has received in advance of this hearing the record of these Goal 18 proceedings, including the Planning Commission's decision and all of the exhibits, which are substantial, I might note. Because of the large number of parties in this matter, I would ask that you keep your testimony succinct and to the point. Thank you for your understanding. Now, I will ask County Council Herbage to explain the procedures and see that exhibits are entered into the record.
You very much, Mr. Chair. In terms of procedure, this will follow a standard procedure of due process. Very shortly, you'll receive the staff report, and that will be given by Anno Hughesing, who is our Director of Planning and Development. And within that, it should be recognized that the entirety of the record established before the Planning Commission will be part of the record. I will ask that Mr. Hughesing indicate what has been introduced or given to him for this record since that time, since the Planning Commission record was completed. As indicated, you'll have the staff report. Everyone will have a chance to testify. But because the applicants have the burden of proof, they get to go first. I think that you have, based on my understanding, you would have three attorneys representing three clients. There could be more. They will be presenting their case, will receive opponent's testimony and evidence. There will be a chance for rebuttal. At some point, whether it's today or not, you will close the hearing, and you will begin deliberations and to make an oral decision on the applications, and that doesn't become final until it's reduced to writing and signed off by the Board of Commissioners. Now, because this is in the nature of a proposal to amend the comprehensive plan to allow goal exceptions, we have ordinances before you, and we do have certain formalities on ordinances. We did this yesterday with a different application. But I would ask the Board, can we read by title only so we can expedite this hearing for each of the ordinances?
Title only is fine with me.
I agree. I'm okay with it.
Me too.
Okay, thank you. So, three ordinances. The first one is amending the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan, adopting an exception to statewide planning Goal 18, implementation requirement five. That's Goal 18 IR5. The exception would allow for the placement of beachfront protective structures on property in Glen Eden, Lincoln Beach that is ineligible under IR5 for protective structures. And I took the second one. So this is case file number 02-LUPC-21. The subject property, that's the Worldmark application, is identified as tax lot 00125 on Assessor's Map number 081116, AC tax lot 9000 on Assessor's Map 81116 DB. Then there's a series of descriptions here, tax lot 00202 in Assessor's Map number 081116 DB, and tax lot 00132 on Assessor's Map 81116 AC, tax lot 00102 on Assessor's Map 081116 DB, tax lot 00101 on Assessor's Map 81116 DB, and tax lot 00103 on Assessor's Map number 81116 DB. Important here, the ordinance declares an emergency, which means it would be effective upon passage. Let's look at the second one. We'll try to get through this a little quicker. This one is amending the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan, adopting an exception to statewide planning Goal 18, implementation requirement five, Goal 18 IR5. The exception would allow for the placement of beachfront protective structures on property in Glen Eden, Lincoln Beach, that is ineligible under IR5 for protective structures. Case file number 01-LUPC-21. This is the Seeridge one. The subject property, Seeridge Condominiums, is identified as tax lot 90s. I think it's supposed to be four zeros after that. We'll check that. On Assessor's Map 081128 BA, with an address, straight address of 4175 North Highway 101. Ordinance declares an emergency. And the third and final one is for the individual property owners. There's separate ordinance for that as well as there's three separate applications. And as we take a look at that, it says, "Amending the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan, adopting an exception to statewide planning Goal 18, implementation requirement five, Goal 18 IR5. The exception would allow for the placement of beachfront protective structures on four properties in Glen Eden, Lincoln Beach, that are ineligible under IR5 for protective structures." Case file number 03-LUPC-21. The subject properties are owned by Ed and Joan, I hope I pronounce this right, Tannaby is what was said previously, tax lot 15100 on Assessor Map 81112-CD. And then there's Richard and Sally Grant, tax lot 15,000 on Assessor Map 081121-CD. Sherry Kane and Peter Kane, trustees of the George Kane Irrevocable Trust, tax lot 14900 on Assessor Map 811121-CD. And Terry and Janice De Silvia, tax lot 14800 on Assessor's Map 811121-CD. This ordinance also declares an emergency. So thank you, Commissioners. We've done our duty to read into the record the three ordinances. Each of them have proposed findings. And we've gone through the procedure. And so I think, Mr. Chair, it'd be time for Mr. Anno Hughesing to go through the staff report and list, in addition to the entirety of the record before the Planning Commission, placed before the Planning Commission, what additional items we did consider.
All right, before we turn to the staff report, again, I'll just go over the procedures from this point. The Board will hear the report from the staff. There will be a time after the staff report for my fellow commissioners and me to ask questions. Then after that, we will move to hear testimony of the applicants. And again, we have three different applicants, and I will hear the, I guess, testimony from the applicants in the order of their cases, so case number 01 or 203. Then it'll be an opportunity for opponent testimony. And after that, if appropriate, there will be an opportunity for the applicants to rebut testimony. And after that, we may consider closing the hearing, and the Board could consider next actions relative to all three of the applicants. If there are no questions, turn the meeting over to Director of Planning, Anno Hughesing, and provide us with a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners, members of the public that are watching. My name is Anno Hughesing. I'm the Director of the Lincoln County Planning Department. Before I get into the substance, I want to invite Jerry, as we always do, that we almost do these together. Jerry works very, very closely with our department. So I think what we're going to do is I'm going to invite him to step in at any time that he thinks that I haven't quite covered something correctly. So Jerry, I think you did want me to note that what's striking is there's been very, very little submissions to us about this since the last hearing. There were several letters in support. All of that information was immediately, as soon as it came in, we uploaded it to the website. So everything that's come in has been posted immediately in real time to the website. So it's been part of the record that you've had an opportunity to look at. The last submission came in yesterday, a letter from some property owners, a property owner just south of Seeridge that noted that they're in opposition of the goal exception for Seeridge. And they noted that they had previously sent a letter to the Planning Commission registering their opposition, and they wanted to make sure that you knew that they continued to oppose it. I believe in the record, there's also, I've been reminded that the letter that was submitted on behalf of Ms. Klammer was, there was a rebuttal testimony that was in the record already from David Phillips, the attorney for Seeridge. So Jerry, I think that's what you were looking for, right? And we didn't receive anything today.
Okay, and just so, in case there's an appeal, it's always good that the record is clear about what's in it. And I understand you received a letter in support actually from DLCD that
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. What is really quite significant and different than normal is an expression of clear support from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And as you've seen in the record, the letter also is very kindly points out that they thank our Planning Commission and the staff for the work that we've all done, and the fact that we included them and others in an inclusive process that I'll talk about in a minute. So thank you, Jerry. That was, yes, that would have been a terrible omission, not to point out. I would have got there eventually, but thank you.
Okay, and so is there anything else to report on in terms of what's in the record?
I don't believe so. Again, I think the critical point is very little came in. Whatever came in went right on, immediately became a part of the record in real time on the website. And so that's been really an opportunity for everyone that has any interest in this to see everything that you've seen, Commissioners, has also been made available to the public in real time as soon as we've received it.
And Anno, excuse me, Jerry, somebody has raised their hands. And it looks like they say, I would like to figure out when public comment will be. Okay.
I replied in the chat, public comment, as you can see, is on the agenda after the public hearing. And we'll give everybody an opportunity that wishes to address the Board under public comment to do so.
Thank you, Chair.
And I'm seeing that Mr. Davies is pleased with the response, and is signaling on chat that he understands that. Okay, Mr. Chairman, and I will go ahead and give the staff report.
Please.
Okay.
No sarcasm intended.
I will do my best to be brief. I know I've promised that before and actually have failed in trying to do that, but
We want to be sure we do it right.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I'd like to start by pointing out that when the Lincoln County Planning Commission spent a lot of time, of course, was the first body within the county to take up this matter. One of our planning commissioners, and you Commissioners may know this, but other people in the public may not know this, but Commissioner Phil Spolnick from the Walport area. Commissioner Spolnick has literally served on our planning commission for decades. In fact, Commissioner Spolnick, believe it or not, was, as obviously a much younger man, was involved in the development of Lincoln County's plan back in the 1970s. So we have an individual that has been serving on our planning commission forever and brings, I believe, of course, a tremendous insight into the activities of the planning commission over the years. And I have a, I made a, there are some draft minutes from that last deliberation that still needs to be approved by the planning commission, but I just want to point out, we got to a critical point in the deliberations among the planning commissioners did. And Commissioners Spolnick felt obliged to say the following. He goes, noting that this process of the goal exceptions has been going on for a long time, but the most important thing he said, it's like, in all my, I'm quoting Commissioner Spolnick here during the deliberations of the planning commission, he goes, "In all my years on the planning commission, we," meaning the planning commission, "have never had anything this involved. Nothing even close to it." The only thing that was more involved than this was when the planning commission did the planning, the multi-year planning process for the entire county. And he notes that that took longer. And I think that's really important to understand that, and why that matters is that I believe what you have in front of you is a really remarkable expansive record created by the applicants and all the people that have submitted testimony and your planning commission. You have an astonishingly complete, amazing record that has legal arguments, scientific arguments. It's just everything imaginable necessary for something for a goal exception, which is an extraordinary process. So the time and the talent and the resources that have been dedicated to this issue is, again, according to Commissioner Spolnick, maybe only the second most involved situation that the planning commission has ever been involved in. I personally believe, and I want to thank everybody that's been involved, that has yielded a tremendous collaboration, an inclusive collaboration. So many people have plugged into this process, have asked about this formally and informally. And so we have an amazing record, and we have, I think, as a result of that, a remarkable, inclusive, and transparent collaboration that led to that record. Because there have been considered the players. You've had all the attorneys from the three different applicants, and a lot of those attorneys have very different legal opinions and stances on the subject. So there was a diversity of legal opinions that were brought in from the applicants. And then what we also did is, because this is such an extraordinary situation, we leaned very, very heavily and invited the participation of the staff and the leadership at Oregon State Parks, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and Steve Shipsey from the Department of Justice, that happens to be the lead lawyer for Department of Land Conservation and Development in Oregon State Park. So he brought a lot of expertise to the table. We've had regular consultations and making sure that members of the conservation community, Surf Rider, the Oregon Coast Alliance, Oregon Shores, we've all kept them in the loop. We've all made sure that we've been talking to them and exchanging information. They have seen, they've been watching this process and participating from the beginning. So, and I think the other major collaborators that deserve to be acknowledged during this that we were so fortunate to have access to staff, both retired and current staff from the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries with Jonathan Allen and George Priest, and some outstanding, and we've all benefited because of those scientists and Douglas, who was hired by the applicants. There's been, so we've had the opportunity to have the best minds and the most knowledgeable people when it comes to the science of these issues, of what's going on in terms of the ecology of Glen Eden Beach also involved in this process. And I want to acknowledge all the good work that Oregon's, that faculty at Oregon State University have provided over the years. So, and why is that important? Because I think we may not know with precision exactly what's going to happen in Glen Eden Beach, but we do know with amazing clarity what eventually will happen in Glen Eden Beach. And so we've been able to harness all of these tremendous assets in Oregon, and that's been part of this process. So again, I think we've had a, there's an amazing record. It's been an amazing collaboration. We've had all the key players that have been involved. And so what I find remarkable at this point is that we have a letter of support, strong support from DLCD, the state agency overseeing this. And we've had expressions of support at the planning commission level expressly from the Oregon Coast Alliance and from Surf Rider, recognizing, thinking that that their point was when they monitored these proceedings, they felt like this process did hit all the right chords, and that they ultimately felt very, very good about the findings that then were produced as well by the planning commission. But let's spend just a moment going back to the very beginning of this, the timing. So, you know, one could make an argument that this whole process really started 70 years ago. Roughly after World War II, when developers went ahead and platted and started developing Glen Eden Beach at urban level densities and were crowding the bluff with small parcels. And maybe they did or didn't really understand at the time that all of those marine terrace sandstone bluffs were moving to the east slowly, obviously. But again, when you, so that was something that we're really responding to decisions that were made by county commissioners in Lincoln County after World War II, and developers after World War II, and property owners that went ahead and built houses and developed Glen Eden Beach in the way they did. But let's fast forward to more recent times. I recall it was at least five years ago that a number of people living in Glen Eden Beach, people, for instance, the Grants and the Tanabes, I mean, I know them well. We've met many, many times. I've met with the people from Seeridge, and I've gotten to know people from Worldmark, representing Worldmark as well. That what happened, of course, is those bluffs kept on eroding back to the east and creating more and more pressure on these properties. So they have been coming to Lincoln County, and that's what I do for a living as a staffer for the planning department. People always ask me, can I develop this property? What are my options? So this is a very routine thing where people would come to the planning department and seek advice about what to do. Now, of course, they were very, very concerned because their properties under our land use system did not qualify to receive riprap protection at the base of their properties, like many of these other properties, because they were developed later. So they were deeply, deeply concerned. So five years ago, those conversations were already happening. And I was counseling them that their options, of course, were, well, you could go, if you don't like the current system, you could go to the Capitol and see if they want to change the law. These are all theoretical possibilities. Go to the Capitol and change the law. Go to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, ask them to change the rule, Goal 18. Or the other third option has always been a goal exception. So what a number of those folks did was, they approached their state senator at the time, Arnie Roblin, and Arnie Roblin instructed the Department, I believe, and the Department of Land Conservation and Development Commission, I think correctly turned around and had this working group. So this Goal 18, that in effect created the Goal 18 Working Group that was held during the summer. There were a number of meetings in 2019. And, you know, that some people have characterized that process as not yielding any results, and it was a waste of time. And I don't believe that's true. I know that I got a lot out of that process where a lot of these issues were examined in depth. And I don't think anyone who even drove slowly past that process didn't realize that really the recommendation or the outcome of that process was to point out that, you know, this problem with, is mostly a Lincoln County problem in terms of the patterns of development that happened. And that the situation was really, there are some places in Telemah too. But to open up the entire beach bill or to open up, you know, the entire goal when the problem is concentrated and focused in Lincoln County and a part of Telemah County didn't seem to make a lot of sense. And so largely the consensus coming out of the Goal 18 Working Group from a number of people that looked at this is that in Lincoln County, that situation, if it needs to be addressed, really ought to be done through a goal exception. So we came out of that process with a, basically, I think, a firm understanding that the situation in Glen Eden Beach at least is probably deserving of a goal exception process. All right, what happened next? Then the various parties coming out of that group, parties that are before you today, they wanted Lincoln County to take on this matter legislatively for a good reason. I mean, their perspective was, wait a minute, we've got this complicated situation. We've got We've got all these different parties. Hey, Lincoln County, wh- why don't you consolidate all of this into a legislative plan amendment process? And that'll be in a more efficient way to deal with the complexities of all of these different cases. And so what happened then was a certain amount of time was burned by Lincoln internally and Lincoln County staff trying to wrestle with the decision, should we ask our commissioners from a staff perspective? We needed to do our homework. And so, you know, Wayne Belmont, and we had a whole team of people here internally in the county going over this from soup to nuts. And the decision was made ultimately to decline having Lincoln County take this on legislatively and instead invite the applicants to submit separate applications through a quasi judicial plan amendment process, which is what we have before us today. But one of the reasons I do want to spend a minute talking about the, our own, and our own process that led us there. I, I recall our county council, Wayne Belmont, at, at a key point in one of the meetings, and we, and they were great meetings. We really dug deeply into this issue behind closed doors, trying to understand what, what the different options were. And I recall, uh, Wayne Belmont saying at a certain point, you know, let's, let's not do this, uh, let's, let's, let's let them go ahead and do a quasi judicial. And, and one of the reasons is there, there's no guidance from the state about how to do any of this. This was, these were uncharted waters that we were all heading into. So the decision was, so that took a while to get, to turn around and say to the, to the folks that are now the applicants, hey, you go ahead, the county's not going to originate this process, take it on. You do it in a more traditional, uh, application process. So that, but that did take some time. And then COVID inter- interrupted, because he says, why is this taking so long? Well, these are the reasons. And then on March 21st of this year, a 1,500-page application from the, from the applicants uh, came to the planning department. And then we needed to internally digest this very, very complicated, comprehensive submission that, that frankly went off in a bunch of different directions because there were, there were different applicants and there were different attorneys with different ideas and, and, and different approaches to this. So it fell to staff ultimately to, um, have to absorb all of that information and, and develop a, an approach and going forward with our planning commission. So I, I just want to point out one other really important moment in that long digestive process, once that application was submitted to us. We did have a Zoom meeting with Steve Shipsey and folks from the Department of Land Conservation Development, Oregon State Parks, and our team. And, and I think that there was what, a moment where a lot of things were crystallized. And we heard there was a, a Luba opinion, a land use board of appeal opinion that had come out just as we were getting ready to try to figure out how to make the staff report and all that work. And we talked about that, that, and that, 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 that land use, that Luba opinion, land use board of appeals opinion had to do with Jordan Cove and a, and a goal exception that, that Coos County was trying to orchestrate to facilitate the, the channel deepening down there. But that Luba opinion was such an enormously helpful guidance to all of us about, all right, what's the latest case law and the latest perspectives from different perspectives about how goal exceptions, this remarkable process in Oregon that's not used very often? How does, how do we really apply these, these very unique facts and situations to the latest thinking legally about how to make a goal exception work? A goal exception that's, that, that will withstand appeal. And so the guidance that came from that Luba opinion was very, very, very helpful. I think it helped a lot of us clarify and crystallized what we needed to do to go forward. We spent a lot of time producing a staff report that, that, that tried to really explain. And the other fundamental insight that had such a tremendous bearing on the outcome of why we have findings and why we have so little opposition and why we have so much support for this application is that a key thing that came out that needed to be understood is that, that's really driving this goal exception is that factually, and you've know this from reading the record. There's been so, that three, three mile stretch of Glen Eden, Lincoln Beach, there's been so much riprap over the years that has gone in there that the scientific community that we referred to earlier is in complete agreement that no matter what, if you riprap those last few properties or not, it, it will categorically not have any impact on the future of that beach. And I'm not sure that can be said about any other beach in Oregon. It's really a singular circumstance. And it has everything to do with the pattern of development that I talked about earlier from 70 years ago. Those properties got platted, small, small parcels right on the bluff. They got developed, they got grandfathered in. So very few places were left in Glen Eden, Lincoln Beach that didn't then, when Goal 18 was created in 1977, that were, that were not grandfathered in, that were prohibited from having riprap. So that was really, you know, that's really an important, uh, factor, factor there as well. And, um, so let's just talk about the la- the last few procedural things that happened. Um, so it was on June, after that, so we, so we, on June 14th, the Lincoln County Planning Commission held a public, held their first public hearing on the staff report and, and this enormous submission and all the, all the letters that came in at that time. Then on June 29th of 21, the planning commission reconvened for the purpose of, they, so they deliberated that night on, on, on the, uh, the, the applications. And they voted unanimously to recommend to the board to adopt the goal exception. Then what happens, of course, when that, that's a standard processes, is that when, when, when our planning commission in a situation like this votes in favor of an applicant, applicants are always asked to draft a set of findings that then they submit to us as staff. And then it's our job to make sure that those findings are aligned with the instructions that came from our planning commission about how to write the findings. Basically, they said yes, because there is, because of the following reasons. And, and they were, and they're, and our planning commission, of course, is expecting ultimately in a, in a follow-up meeting to have those findings come to them. And they could read it and say, yes or no, this match, this is, these findings lay out the reasons legally and otherwise, factually, legally, why we said yes in the first place. So there's, there was really a second bite at the apple. Because, because what we did was we had to, the staff had to take those findings and rework them substantially to get them to the point that we felt they were legally defensive, defensible, that they would survive an appeal if there was an appeal. And that it really matched exactly what the planning commission's instructions to us were. Again, the instructions mirror the reasons why they were in favor of the goal exception application. And the, the key factor that needed to, that I, I believe drove the planning commission to say yes. They, I mean, they were concerned if, if, hey, if we say yes to this goal exception, is that going to? They were, they, they, they articulated these concerns and other people were concerned about this. If we say yes to, if we say yes to excusing these people from, from these existing requirements that they can't get riprap and say they can get riprap, is that going to open the door somehow? Is, is that going to set a bad precedent for other places up and down the Oregon coast where people say, hey, what about me? I, you know, I, I have a property that was developed after 77. I can't get riprap now. My house is threatened. Now I need riprap. I want you to, I want you to give me the same deal that, that you're about to give to these people up in Glen Eden Beach. And so what, so what, the, why I'm spending so much time on this is that the key insight that drove everything here was that Lincoln Beach is very, very different. That that beach is dead. It can't be saved. There's so much riprap and the scientists are in complete agreement about that. So between climate change and the riprap that's already there and the sand mining that happened in the past and that location on the, on the, on Oregon coast's beaches, it's clear that there was really no purpose left to applying Goal 18 in that setting. So it was that narrow factual finding anchored to a consensus among the key scientists in Oregon that understand this that, that let the planning commission feel extremely comfortable saying yes to a goal exception in that setting. And so the mantra became from them and from others that were watching this process, including the state and our friends in the conservation community. It's like, all right, we're feeling comfortable, but make sure you narrow these findings so that they can't be used by others as an unfortunate precedent that would blow open Goal 18. And oh, by the way, if you didn't craft the findings correctly, if it's, it would be appealed and you would not, you would fail. Uh, in a Luba, a Luba challenge would take down the, take down the goal exception unless they were narrowly drawn. So that really, that became the whole exercise when we went back to the planning commission. And when other interest groups, including the state, were watching this and participating in the process, that early on, they were saying, hey, we really like the direction we're going here, but we want to make, but we want to see these findings first. We want to make sure they're really narrowly drawn. And we want to make sure that they align with what your planning commission actually told you to do. So I think we got there. And I think one of the reasons we have so little opposition, in fact, really basically no opposition to speak of for something that's, would normally have been so controversial is that we did have, as I, my opening remarks pointed out, we had this enormous collaboration. We had every, all the stops were pulled out to be able to have the most vigorous, inclusive, robust, transparent fact-finding and deliberative process that got us to the stage. So again, I think at this point, you also have in front of you as part of the record, a set of findings from the planning commission that I would invite you to start your process from. If you're inclined to go forward here, is that basically we, we think those findings and, and I think the letter from the Department of Land Conservation and Development and the absence of the conservation community saying, wait, because if we had somehow not had narrow findings, trust me, there would be letters from Surf Rider, Oregon Shores. I guess I'm speculating here, but I'm pretty darn sure. We'd, we'd have, they would be here and they would be opposing this. And the state would be also saying, wait a minute, guys, this is not part of what we signed up for. So I, I really, I'm, I'm, I'm very confident that we've, 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 our planning commission did such a good job. And I, I want to compliment them because they waded through this mind-boggling record, listened to all these arguments. And also we're listening carefully enough to say, all right, we get it. Go narrow and we're with you. We'll be, we'll be a yes, but make sure you have those findings that are narrow. So again, I think, I think we're there. I think we've put in front of you this remarkable record. Uh, got to admit, I'm very, very proud. I'm very proud of the team at Lincoln County. I'm proud of everyone that participated in this to get us to this point. Now that means that we shouldn't be listening in earnest to anybody that participates today and offers additional insights and weigh them against everything that you've had. I've said that to other people. I said, I'm confident our commissioners are going to keep, notwithstanding this amazing record and all the work that's been done, they're going to keep an open mind. And if anybody testifies today or brings up new arguments that really shines an important new light on this, I will all stop and, and, and prob- and, and I'm sure that you'll, you'll want to make sure that we're, we're taking that into account. So, um, I think at this point, Mr. Chair, I'm probably done. Jerry, I would invite you to clarify or correct anything that I've said or anything that you think I might need to include in the staff report at this time, because I want to get to the point that I answer your questions and that we hear from the others. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, this is Jerry Herbage, Assistant County Counsel. Can I make a comment?
Please.
Okay, thank you. And we'll be quick. So we need to be mindful of ORS 197763 sub 5. And so when a staff report is given, uh, the requirement is that before people begin testifying, we list the applicable substantive criteria. So I'd ask Anno, uh, go over your, uh, staff report, original one, check the, uh, the criteria and put that on the record. I think the idea of that is that we want people who testify to direct their testimony to that criteria. In fact, ORS 197763 5 sub B. And I'll read this into the record because it's required. We need to state that testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described uh, above, which is the substantive criteria that Anno will go over shortly of this subsection or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. And then, uh, sub C, we need to state that failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue. So, um, I think that as soon as we get the criteria read into the record, I think that the staff report is concluded.
Okay, thank you, Counsel, Counselor. Back to Director Hughes.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm reading from the staff report. The applicable criteria is Lincoln, Lincoln County code 1.1310 sub 1, uh, small e, uses permitted outright in a residential zone. And then let our, uh, LCC, Lincoln County Code 1.0105 sub 4, comprehensive plan policies for beaches and dunes. And scrolling down here and, uh, and land concert, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, LC, uh, Lincoln County Code 1.1252, um, notice of exceptions to statewide planning goals. I'll continue here. So I, and all of this has been put in our public notices already and all of this has been on the record. So it's in Mars, it's in the staff room. I'm reading from my staff report. So there's this, thank you for Jerry for making sure we did this. And then the following administrative rules apply. There's administrative rule that, that really lays out how goal exceptions happen. OAR 660040020 applies and, uh, and OAR 660040020 sub 2 sub A. And you'll see it in our, and so you do have these, in addition to those, our, our, our codes, we have, it crosswalks you back and forth to the administrative rules that lay out. And it's a blizzard of questions. If you've looked at the record and the staff report, these goal exceptions, they, there's like a thousand questions you have to answer just to make sure everything, everything sort of is aligned. So Jerry, I, I think, I think though, I think I've done what you've requested and thank you for asking me to do it.
Very good.
All right, uh, and just to clarify, um, I will ask either Director Hughes or Counsel Herbage, if we hear testimony that is outside of these parameters, will somebody alert, uh, me?
We'll endeavor to do that.
We, we, we can endeavor to do that. What I would say to the board, first of all, to the audience and those listening, please, um, when you make your comments, uh, make sure that they, uh, address the applicable criteria or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which you believe apply to the decision. And to the board, it's, it's kind of hard because human nature is, the simple people go, uh, a, a little bit out of line. That's okay. I mean, we don't, we don't want to encourage that, but what I would say is, you know, you're going to give weight to testimony. And so you'll give weight, you know, the weight, particularly when people are addressing the criteria.
All right, we'll simply leave it that we ask those that testified to, uh, make sure that they believe their comments are pertinent to the criteria.
Rather than having Jerry or I somehow intervene and say, no, I don't think that's part of the record. If you have any questions as staff, of course, we're available to you during the course of these proceedings. If, if you wish to ask us those questions.
I think it's important that people that wish to testify feel they were given the opportunity. I think it's important that people that wish to testify feel they were given the opportunity.
I couldn't agree more.
All right. Anything else before we move on to applicant testimony? Any questions from Board of Commissioners at this point of staff?
No questions at this time.
No questions from me either.
Okay. And again, I think, uh, the questions that I had have been answered as far as the fact that, uh, and correct me, uh, Director, but, uh. The vote by the planning commission was unanimous?
Yes.
And there have been no appeals?
No.
It, it did not get appealed, but as I recall, it was near unanimous, but not unanimous.
Um, well, hey, that's, thank you, Jerry. There were. There were, um. There were different vote, there, there were. Of course, remember, like you're going to have three separate votes on each, on each of these applications. And thank you, Jerry, I, I stand corrected. There were one or two commissioners on one or two of the applicant, out of the eight voting. That voted no.
Okay.
So it, so thank you, Jerry. It was not unanimous. Um, there were. There were one or two on, and, and it varied from. Commissioner to commissioner on that. But it was, that's, that's a fair, but thank you, Jerry.
Okay. Um, I have no more questions. So we'll now move on to applicant testimony. And again, I'll give the, uh. Representatives of the, uh, three different cases to speak first. And then anyone else that wishes to provide, uh, testimony in support of these, um. Applications will be given an opportunity and then we'll move on to, uh, opponent, uh, testimony. And, um. Then, uh, opportunity to rebut. So again, as I indicated, uh, we'll go through, uh, the agent's testimony in order of the cases. So case one will be the, um. Sea Ridge condominiums, and I believe the representative is Counselor Phillips.
Yes, Mr. Chair, David Phillips, for the record, representing Sea Ridge. And, uh, the remainder of the commission, good afternoon. I want to just say, Anno covered it. He. In, in, in extreme detail and thoughtfulness. Covered every one of the points that, uh, that I wanted to address. So I'm going to distill my comments to three points. First urgency. The second, uh, a, a history in context of the, the collaboration involved. That brought us to this point and the effect of a decision. Here and to, uh, to begin, uh, Mr. Glass and Dr. Shepsis, the experts that, um. Presented testimony into the record as well as all of the, uh, other materials that we have submitted. Show an extreme urgency on the part of the Sea Ridge location as well as the other applicants. Sea Ridge is effectively one major storm away from the failure of its curtain drain. And the release of sanitary sewage from the Glen Eden Beach sanitary, uh, district facility. And we've known that for a, a number of years and we, we, that's the, the, the underlying reason why we engaged. Uh, almost five years ago, Senator Roblin's office, um, my client was, uh. Was happy to begin engaging state officials, local officials. Um, I don't know how many meetings. That a board chair from Sea Ridge has had with, with Anno. Scores at least phone calls and emails and personally meetings with myself. Beginning, um, in, in the beginning of this process. I can't go back 70 years like some of the folks or one of the members of the planning commission could. Um, but for the last five years, I've lived a very engaged process with all levels of government in this state and. To its credit, this is the collaborative, uh, way that Oregon tackles, um. Heavy lifts like this and, and truth be told, heavy lifts don't happen overnight. Um, the engagement with Senator Roblin's office and Senator Johnson's office on the coastal caucus. Um, spawned connection and engagement with the Oregon Coastal Management Program. Um, Patty Snow began reaching out to us, uh, in early 2018. Um, then Meg Reed and her vast history and, and knowledge. Matt Spangler and others that were involved at DLC at the time. And as you know, Matt has a personal connection to this county where. Uh, we have this history. And then as that, the year of 2018, and I'm just putting a couple more finer points on the initial comments of, of Mr. Husing. Related to the collaboration engagement of all of the, the stakeholders involved in and affected by this, this issue. Um, Ms. Snow reached out to various stakeholders. Um, there were representatives of the scientific community from Oregon State University. Mr. Glass as well. I was asked to be the private property owner representative. We had representatives from all of the government agencies that would be decision makers and affected by that kind of a decision. In the beginning of, uh, January 2019, we began that process. Of engagement through the goal 18 focus group and, and I want to be, uh, clear that I sat next to a Surf Rider, um, policy analyst. For that, the entire, uh, year engaging with him personally, because most of the time we generally, we would be diopposed in our opinions. And as we continued to work together and, and all of the stakeholders worked together. Toward the end of 2019, after a number of meetings and a number of hearings, accepting, uh, public testimony as well as. The thoughts and insights of, of individuals who were engaged in this ground zero type, uh, uh, process from the beginning. There, we moved toward a final recommendation and. I, I do dispute that, that someone could feel that that year long, um, engagement process through. The coastal management program was somehow ineffective. In fact, it was extremely effective because at the beginning of that process, we had a number of options, as Anno mentioned. On the table. We had a legislative option that was possible. We had a potential for a goal, um, amendment itself, which is a legislative process in itself. A, a statewide rulemaking process. And. The final report distilled. In recommending against a rulemaking process. Or legislative actions in favor of a process that's, that was already on the books. An underutilized process that we are engaged today. In fact, a process that had not been utilized at all. So that is why we are here and I'm, I'm pleased to hear, uh, and see in this very, uh, fully formed record, the, the history of. All kinds of perspectives. The science, the policy, the private party rights, the, um, public interests. And the government of various from, from various government agencies and now the county as well. And the well-informed planning commission. If there ever was. A situation. That rises to the level of a goal exception, this is the set of circumstances. And, uh, just for point of clarification, um. Mr. Herbage did mention that I had. Rebutted some testimony from our neighbors and, and eligible goal 18 parcel. And that, uh, our, my letter is on the record. I'm just going to add a few sentences to, to that letter. And then, uh, and then finish my comments. The owners of an unarmored but goal 18 eligible property. Have expressed concerns that this exception will force them. To armor their property. That's not the case, but it isn't the granting of an exception that compels that action. The extensive evidence in this fully formed record demonstrates it's the deterioration of the literal. Sub cell that will eventually force them to protect their property. No action on our part, nor the county's part. The applicant's request for our app, the, my client's request for an exception merely places us on equal footing. With our neighbors who are in fact eligible under goal 18 to protect their property. And fine, my final point is the effect of your decision, uh, to the extent you do, um. Vote in favor and adopt the, uh, the recommendation of your well-informed, uh, planning commission. Is to protect these homeowners' properties and in a very extremely. Exceptional set of circumstances. Under the Jordan Cove, um, uh, Luba opinion and under all jurisdictional and precedential case law that I'm familiar with. These set of circumstances. Do not exist anywhere else that could cause, um, a, a concern on the part of the public or the government or. Any neighboring parcel owner that, uh, that would be concerned that goal 18 somehow has not been. Duly served. It will be duly served with this process in completion and, and pointing to pages four through eight of a very detailed. Uh, recitation of those, um, facts and circumstances in your findings. And I appreciate your time and effort in, uh, in this, in this process and thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next we'll hear from the agent from the Worldmark and I'll apologize. I do not know who that is in advance, but I sense it might be, uh, Mr. Rasmussen.
It, it is. Thank you, Chair. And welcome.
Welcome.
Uh, thank, thank you very much. Uh, I have some slides and I'm hoping Casey can help me walk through, but before I jump into those. I just want to take a brief moment too, to. Thank all of those who've come before, both Anno and, and Dave have been on this path longer than me. Uh, but certainly Dennis Bartolos and Dave Phillips also warrants, uh, recognition for the efforts they put forward. As does the planning department itself, particularly Anno, who stood in the middle of a hurricane of paper. Uh, generated by this set of applications and, and weathered that quite well. The planning commissioners who listened to hours of testimony and sifted through those about 2,000 pages. And our state partners at DLC and elsewhere, and not the least of which. The dozens, maybe almost a hundred, uh, residents from Lincoln County who participated in the goal 18 work group. And who have testified in writing and before the planning commission to get us to this point. It has been a long journey, but I am frankly very glad to be here today before the board commissioners. I know you're extremely busy and appreciate your time. I just want to cover two points in my time with you today. Uh, the first, the specific reasons why this is the singular most appropriate place in the state for a goal 18 exception. And then second, a very brief discussion of the unnecessary harm that would befall. The county as its residents, if the exception weren't approved. Uh, Casey, if you'd be so kind, uh, to put up the first slide. Uh, could you scroll, scroll up to, uh, slide number one? Thank you. So. Uh, basically we're asking for an exception to requirement five. Uh, goalie team requirement five generally prohibits riprap revetments and similar protective measures on properties that were developed after January 1 of 1977. It embodies Oregon's policy to limit and restrict riprap in order to preserve beaches and dunes. And littoral cell functionality in Oregon. The applicants uniformly, uh, generally agree with the policies served by goalie. And agree that preserving littoral cell functionality is a core value of Oregon and important. It's just there's specific reasons at this beach, particularly that it's lost. That the extent of riprap prevents that functioning from happening. That warrant an exception here. Uh, next slide, please. Right, uh, thank you. There. The primary reason, as I mentioned, why a goal exception is appropriate here is lifted in the left, left column of this song, the left column of this slide. Uh, the experts in this case uniformly from DLC to Dogami. To Doug Glass, uh, private geotechnical engineer and Dr. Vladimir Shepsis. All uniformly conclude that this stretch of beaches irreparably lost. Due to the extent of riprap already existing there. And regardless of what happens in these applications, that beach is going to continue to deteriorate. Uh, in the right column is a host of other reasons that applicants submitted evidence on, uh, but we don't need to walk through that all today. Next slide, please. So here are four photos of the bluff that issued just for context. On the left is the Worldmark Wyndham Glen Eden Resort. On the bottom right is the Sea Ridge condominiums. And on the top right is the four individual homeowners on Lincoln Avenue. Uh, next slide, please. These are, uh, the same properties, but shot from the beach, just so you can kind of see the type of erosion that we're experiencing here. Uh, you can see it's, it's extensive. On the left again is the Wyndham Worldmark. Um, location and on the right is the Sea Ridge condominiums location. On the, on the Wyndham slide, you can start to see these vertical seismic stability structures starting to get exposed. Uh, the loss of those makes the property more vulnerable in the event of an earthquake. On the Sea Ridge property, Dave Phillips alluded to it, but right above this photo, just literally a few feet above the bluff there. Is the Glen Eden sanitary district lift, lift station number six. The commissioners probably noticed the letter in the record from the president of Glen Eden Sanitary District explaining how if that lift isn't protected, it will eventually. Get lost and potentially result in effluent on the beach, which obviously nobody wants. Uh, next slide, please. So these are, these are shots of the Lincoln Avenue homes from the beach, uh, in March of this year. The commissioners probably are aware that there was a collapse of this bluff and you can see what happened there. Uh, it sounds like they're not going to speak today, uh, but the families that live in these homes, at least two of them are sitting with Dennis Bartolos. Watching this hearing and testified in front of the planning commission. They're good decent people. Um, I can't imagine the stress they're going through trying to get through this, uh, long process to try to get some protection.
Hey, hey, Will, sorry to interrupt you. I don't know if it's just me, but your audio is kind of fading in and out. I don't know what's going on there, but at certain points it becomes difficult to hear you.
I'm sorry.
I'm seeing that too.
Yeah, maybe I will try closer. That might help. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to stand closer and I'll try to speak louder. My apologies. Thank you for letting me know, uh, Commissioner Jacobson. So next slide, please. This is just an aerial, uh, an image that shows exactly how protected Glen Eden Beach is. This is the most protected stretch of beach on the Oregon coast. This is zoomed in on the three locations at issue today. And the green properties are properties that are already protected by riprap or that are eligible for protection. You can see there's these few islands of red of unprotected properties. Uh, most of which are represented here today, asking for this goal exception. Next slide, please. These are some aerial photos of these properties. And the prolifer, the proliferation of protective structures here has an unusual impact on the remaining properties where essentially you have these islands of unprotected properties. Surrounded by revetments, you can get unusual erosion patterns and unfortunately. Quicker erosion patterns where the water sloughs off and erodes away. And in these aerials, you can see some unnatural embayments. Essentially on the north and south ends of the unprotected property. Next slide, please. So one thing we wanted to make sure and we wanted to know about in coming into these hearings was if there was any sensitive habitat or endangered species involved at these properties. We sent out some biologists from Evern Northwest to perform a critical area assessment out at the Wyndham site. And, um, that assessment is in the record and as you'll see. They checked for threatened endangered species and found none. They checked for quality fish and wildlife habitat and found none. And as you might expect, the extensive revetments out there have severely degraded the natural resources and habitat available at this location. Uh, next slide, please. These are just some aerial photos to just. Let you see exactly how much revetment is out there, property after property is protected. It's dominated by, by riprap because of the unusual history and characteristics of this location. Uh, next slide, please, Casey. So the next couple of slides, just, um. This is all information that's documented much better in the record, but I just wanted to mention them, why this beach is so special and frankly, why this exception won't have implications elsewhere in Oregon. Uh, the first reason is that there was historic sand mining at Schoolhouse Creek, just a couple of hundred yards south of the Wyndham site. They estimate that they removed about 80,000 cubic yards of sand and. At the time, they thought that was a renewable resource. Subsequent sciences let us know that that is not a renewable resource. And it essentially starved this beach of about half to three quarters of its sand supply. Next slide, please. Uh, also the just geologic composition. Uh, also, the just geologic composition of Glynnian Beach makes it more vulnerable to significant erosion events. It has a coarse grain sand and it has a steep beach slope, which both of which make erosion events more likely. And uh, the waves reach the toe of the slope and once they do, the bluff erodes extremely quickly as a result of these natural conditions. Next slide, please. Uh, similarly, climate change has and has had and will continue to have a disproportionate impact on Glynnian Beach. Uh, because of those natural vulnerabilities we've discussed before and the robbing of the sand, the bigger storms that we see and warmer temperatures and greater waves impact Glynnian Beach more than elsewhere on the Oregon coast. And that's documented in the record. In the nineties, there was some studies done of the rate of erosion of the bluff. And um, since then, the rate of erosion has gone up sixfold in into now the two thousand twenties. Um, which is unfortunately something that Lincoln County and and this stretch of Oregon is just gonna have to figure out how to deal with moving forward. And these applications are one way of how that can happen. Next slide, please. This is this is just a kind of a couple of slides on what would be lost. You you have here the Lincoln County Homes, the Worldmark Resort and the Sea Ridge condominium. They combined have about an assessed value of twenty four million dollars. Um, Worldmark is the largest, one of the largest resorts in the county. Sea Ridge has eighty homes in it. And the individual homeowners have obviously been there for a long time and uh, don't want to see their home fall in the ocean either. Uh, next slide, please. So we we had two economists, Dr. Edward Waters and Dr. Hans Radke preparing economic assessment, which is also in the record to kind of study what what economic impact would there be? This just summarizes the lost tax revenue. In in short, there's about three hundred thousand dollars in direct property taxes each year from these properties. A little over seven hundred thousand if you have anticipated losses, if you anticipate the diminution in value of surrounding properties if these things were to fail. And in all the the all forms of revenue that would be lost to the county and state are about one point four five million dollars a year. Uh, next slide, please. And here's some more information from the economists on uh harm to local economy. Over a hundred fifty thousand or over a hundred forty thousand visitor days lost per year. Uh, lost tourism revenue of about eight and a half million, a hundred ninety jobs and six million dollars a year in lost employment income. Next slide, please. So that's it. Uh, Ono suggested that applicants try to be brief and he he summarized the situation well. I just humbly request and ask that this board follow the planning commission's recommendations. And if there is uh one thought that you take away from my time speaking today, it's this. Time is of the essence. Don't know, uh, particularly on the individual homeowners, how many days they have. Uh, once, if this body votes to approve this, there's a couple of steps that need to happen before that that house sitting right there can get protected, including a state permit and actually putting some rocks out there and some protection out there. Um, if this body is willing to entertain approving this, uh, I beseech you to close the record and at least take some informal deliberation action today. Uh, thank you so much for your time on this matter.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Rasmussen. Um, next we'll hear from Counselor Bartolus. And um, please feel free to cor- correct my pronunciation of any of those uh owners of those four homes. So you're next.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I uh represent the four property owners. The only one that needs correction on the pronunciation is it's Tanabis. The property owners on the north and then uh the Grants, the Canes and the De Silvias. I've lived on the Oregon coast an awful long time. I've I've moved to Arizona recently. But for sixty-six years, I lived on the Oregon coast. And just to follow up on Mr. Rasmussen's point, if the board is going to approve this, uh, it it's very, very critical. Uh, as the commission, who is all uh familiar with the coast, knows our first storms usually come along sometime about October and the Grant House, which is the one exposed uh, the most out there really cannot survive any any waves. The according to a survey, the foundation is always already over the edge. And the Tanabi property, which is to the north of that, uh, also um is undermined. Uh, there's a, there's an ocean cave that's been carved out under there. So they're in a very perilous situation as well, as is the Kane property uh to the south of Grants. It's also uh very, very close now to the to the shore. Um, there is one additional item that's in the record that I'd like to point out. I submitted it this morning. We've we've been having ongoing work trying to prepare for the hopeful uh favorable outcome of this. And NIA Surveying has done a survey that was just completed within the last week. That shows actually where the foundation lines are, where the structures are in relation to the bluff. And also that survey shows where the vegetation line, which is quite a ways to the west, actually, of these properties. So the encroachments pass well beyond the vegetation uh line. I I want to back out for just a second and indicate that uh our clients believe there's a lot of other issues in this matter. There's a number of other legal issues involved and we're not certainly waiving those. But we've been working with the county and the others to see the way forward as being a goal eighteen exception. Uh, and we wanted to give goal eighteen a chance to work. And I think it's become clear through all who have participated that if goalie team doesn't work in this situation, then goal eighteen probably or the exception process simply doesn't work. Because the information, the evidence in this case is not only uh compelling for a goal exception. It's simply overwhelming. And if a goal, like I say, if a goal exception won't work here, then it simply won't work. This uh several mile stretch of beach is unique from everything else on the Oregon coast. Uh, there's a number of uh an incredible amount of riprap already there, probably somewhere over seventy-five percent. Ninety percent of that area is entitled to be riprap. Uh, and so there's just a very few uh areas that are not riprap. Our client's property happens to be in the middle of an area where there is riprap immediately to the north, as you can see from the pictures. And it's actually that riprap when high waves and wind came in the end of February that caused the waves to swirl around there and have a very, very massive collapse in that area that's caused the damage that you see now. The area immediately south of De Silvia is and is entitled to riprap. The actual riprap itself is just a couple lots uh south of that. Uh, but this is where the application of the state standards have a devastating effect because you've got this entitlement to riprap this whole area and then you leave two hundred and fifty feet in the middle uh, that uh simply aren't riprap. It's just a recipe for disaster and that disaster is already well in the making and that's why the adoption of this is so critical. Uh, as I pointed out in the written materials, there's another factor here. The there's a public drainage way that the county accepted for public dedication in about two thousand three or so, they accepted it from a developer to the east. And there's an actual drain line that drains a huge area to the east that comes out between the Tanabi and the Grant properties. And when you look at some of the photos, you can see that the uh rain, the water comes out of that drain. It uh supersaturates the bluff. It's created a channel down below that runs to the ocean. Uh, and the i- as part of this, the Grants and the Tanabis are certainly willing to continue the riprap along that five foot strip between their properties to protect their properties and that five foot public strip there. But uh, that's been a very compelling factor in the damages that have been caused to uh their property. Now, it's very unusual that you have all the scientists that are involved in this, including the independent scientist, Dr. George Priest, Dr. John Allen, who have given uh their testimony and the record through Ono's conversations with them that say, uh, absolutely, this beach is uh is not renewable. It's done. Uh, and nothing's going to change that outcome. Uh, some of the others have spoken as to to why that is, and I won't go into that again. Uh, there's a lengthy uh report from Doug Doug Glass in the record. Also, Dr. Shepsis, who's um commented on this. And I think it's pretty remarkable, too. Uh, you know, I've been doing land use in the county now for probably about forty-four years and to have DLCD not only come out and support but strong support of this exception is extremely telling and extremely compelling. It's also very telling that Surf Rider uh and uh the Oregon Coast Alliance have also indicated they're not opposing this because they um they understand that this is a very, very compelling case. This is what goalie uh a goal exception was designed to address. And to the extent that Oregon shores had submitted testimony uh opposing it, their testimony is very general in nature. Just talking about beaches generally and to the extent they comment specifically on this beach, they simply have their facts wrong. This is not comparable to any other stretch on the Oregon coast or any other beach. This is unique. And all the experts uh have so indicated. Now, I'd like to add just one thing regarding the Lincoln County uh comprehensive plan. In order to amend your zoning ordinance, you you have to qualify under one of a couple of things. Uh, the first one is that the original plan was an error. Clearly, if we knew uh now what we knew then, it's clear that the uh plan was in error. Uh, this whole area was ripraped from from Surf uh the Surf Rider Resort on the south, just north of Forwardy Creek, all the way up through Salashan. That area was was heavily developed, even when we did the plan back in the seventies with uh small lots. Uh, and it was probably an error not to take a goal exception at that point. Uh, please keep in mind, too, that uh the Grants prior to the time they purchased that property in the nineteen nineties actually had in writing from Oregon Parks uh, who in consultation with the county had determined that their property would be eligible for shoreline protection. So it came as quite a shock to them when all of a sudden they were told, well, no, it doesn't qualify uh, because they have letters in writing that said they would qualify uh when the time came and those letters are in the record. Uh, secondly, your plan allows uh for a zone change when there's a change in circumstances. And and again, here with what we've learned now about climate change, what we've learned uh in terms of beach dynamics. And a lot of this work was actually done in the nineteen nineties by Dr. uh Dr. Priest and others. Their their writings are in the records. We now know that this massive damage is is occurring. Um, and lastly, I would reflect uh and emphasize actually what uh Will Rasmussen and Dave Phillips said is candidly, we not only need this passed, we need it passed yesterday. Our clients have been uh working with Doug Glass uh to design uh, the fix for this property. They've had the survey work done. They've been in contact with state parks about an emergency permit. But in order to accomplish that, we need the uh, the county to sign on off on what's called the Luxor Land Use Compatibility Statement. And uh, we are prepared to uh walk that through the process as soon as this ordinance is passed. Uh, with the hope that you're going to pass it. So again, this is extremely uh critical uh, to show that the process works and to show that it'll actually work. Excuse me, to save the uh, the property, these houses and the other improvements that are on these properties. As I indicated, the Grants and Tanabis are here with me. Uh, they would be glad to answer any questions, but in the interest of brevity. And since their testimony was already in the record at the planning commission, they didn't register to testify, but if there's any questions or if you'd like to hear from them, they're certainly available. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Excuse me, and thank you for all the work that the planning department has put into this matter. We know this has been a Herculean effort. And we hope it culminates with uh an outcome of showing that the exception process can work and that it can work in this play, in this situation, and then it can work timely in this situation. Uh, thank you. That's all I've got unless there's questions.
Okay, thank you. And uh, my apologies to the Tanabis. Um, my wife will tell you that English is my only language, but sometimes I treat it as if it's a second language. So again, my apologies to the Tanabis. And um, if there are no questions from commissioners, we'll move on to uh testimony in favor from other individuals uh that are present. All right, Casey, do we know uh if there are additional individuals? I see uh I'll let you run the process, Casey.
Yeah, no, sounds good. It looks like we've got a hand raised from Matt Davies. So Matt, I am uh unmuting you, so uh go ahead.
And for the record, for the record, please state your name and your address.
Can you hear me first?
Yes.
Perfect. My name is Matthew Davies. I am the owner of the Holiday Hills uh Mobile Home Park directly to the north of the Tanabis. The reason I'm speaking today and I'm going to apologize, I'm not a great public speaker and I might be too blunt and too to the point. Uh, first, I want to say I've heard a lot of people say great things about Ono. Um, we've had the chance to work with them as the owners for the last three years and just want to say I've never had a chance to meet you, Ono. It's great to meet you and I appreciate all that you've done for us since we've uh owned the uh park. Um, supervisors, we um oversee a hundred spaces of affordable housing within your county. The Tanabis house, I mean, I don't know, it sounds like nobody's sugarcoating it. It's how, it looks like it's halfway off the cliff. It's eating into our bluff. We're at risk right now of probably losing about five home, five affordable housing homes of our residents. And if this keeps up, we could have approximately about twenty in danger. Um, uh, I know that uh you guys have your laws up there. You're not crazy California like we are down here. Um, it sounds like you guys, I know down here, um, everybody is on board with letting houses just fall off the cliff. And it sounds like you folks are being ree-
We lost your audio, I think.
Ah, can you hear me?
You're back.
Okay, what's what's the last thing you heard? I apologize.
Uh, California.
California, we're crazy down here. We like to let people, we like to let their homes just fall off a cliff and uh watch people's livelihoods just get washed away. Um, it sounds like you've got this Title eighteen exception. Uh, you need to use it in this case. Uh, these attorneys that have spoken to you have spoken very eloquently. They've explained the issues. This is absolutely in need of it unless you want to lose some vital affordable housing units in the in our park and watch some homes of ours fall off the cliff. Um, I just want to again speak in support of the Tanabis, speak in support of taking care of the problem. You guys need to be pro property rights or please do, excuse me, you don't need to do anything. I would ask you to please be pro property rights. Take care of the Tanabis, let them get their business done so that the bluff is uh shored up, it becomes safe and it doesn't cause, cause further problems for everybody else. That's all. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Uh, anyone else wish to speak in favor?
I'm gonna go ahead and unmute Donald Benz. Um, and I guess if Donald is is not in that line, then we can move uh him to to a later time. So Donald, you should see a budding asking you to unmute.
I hope I'm unmuted. This is Donald Benz.
We hear you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time today and for consideration of this very serious um situation. Um, my name is Donald Benz. My wife and I have been owners at Sea Ridge, which is at forty-one seventy-five Northwest Highway one oh one. We've been owners there since nineteen ninety-one. We too were told the same thing as our colleagues up north about the tentative improvement for beachfront protection that was then taken away. That was disconcerting to all of us at Sea Ridge. I want to point out that carefully graphed- I want to point out that carefully graphed crafted legislation with its rules and regulations will ideally provide the most benefit for the most people while protecting the constitutional rights of the minority. For this reason, you must recognize the importance of an exemption to Goal eighteen. Not every section of the Oregon coast, as you have heard, is identical. They're subject to variations of current topography and soil composition. You've heard these referred to as literal cells. This section of beach is considered its own unique literal cell. As you have heard, almost ninety percent of this section already has beachfront protection, some of which was permitted under less than uniform criteria. This, as you have heard, has put enormous pressure on the few remaining parcels that are currently endangered. If there is any area on the beach that deserves an exception, this is it. A Goal eighteen exemption will not allow, well, I'm sorry, allow protection of those properties and preserve individual property rights, but as you have already heard, will in no way change the appearance, accessibility, or current use of the beachfront, which is the goal of the beach bill. Thank you for consideration, and we hope for a favorable outcome.
Thank you, Mr. Benz. Appreciate that. Mr. Miller, who's next?
Let's go alphabetically. Next, we're going to go with Gordon Crisman. And you are unmuted, I believe, Gordon.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
We hear you.
My name is Gordon Crisman. My wife and I have lived at Sea Ridge for sixteen years. I just, I'm going to basically tear up my comments. I think Ono Husing and the three attorneys did a fabulous job summarizing anything that I was going to say. I would just say that at Sea Ridge, we have worked for, you know, thirty years with the county and OPRD. And we really appreciate the work that's been done on this. And I think anything else I would add would just be duplication. So thank you again for giving us the time, and that's all I'll have to say.
All right, thank you. Mr. Miller, who's next?
Let's move to Diana Ransdell. You should be able to unmute.
Okay, wait.
We're trying.
You're unmuted. This is John Ransdell. If permitted, I'd like to speak for my wife and myself.
Yes, you may.
We have been owners of Worldmark for, you know, almost twenty years. And for that period of time, being that we're both disabled, it makes it hard for us to travel. But when we do travel, we usually spend over a month at the beach in the area of, you know, Glen Eden. And doing so, of course, we spend our dollars in our local businesses. Yet our fees and taxes go to the various government agencies. Both being disabled, it's hard for us to travel, yet Glen Eden Resort has amazing accommodations that allow us to travel and stay there for long periods of time. The pool being one thing that really comes in handy. We would be destroyed if we didn't have the availability of, you know, that location. And we plead that you please go and approve the request by Club Worldmark. I believe that the County Board of Commissioners has done an outstanding job. I thank you all for your work. I don't want to continue talking. I want to keep this good and short. But there again, I plead for you to please support and allow this request by Club Worldmark and also these other locations. I thank you very much for your time.
Okay, for the record, could we get your first name? I believe Diana Ramsdell is the name that shows on our screen.
I'm her husband. My name is John Ransdell. It's R A N S D E L L.
All right, John. And you indicated your residence there at Worldmark or at times.
At times, yes, we actually live in Idaho. So when when you do travel to the coast, we need to spend, you know, money there to, you know, take care of everything we need to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, move on, Mr. Miller.
I feel needed to go on further and further.
Oh, I'm going to mute them. Okay, there we go. Let's move on to Bruce Dummer. Bruce Dummer.
Hi, is my volume okay?
We hear you.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Dummer. For the past five years, my wife and I have been part-time residents in one of the eighty Sea Ridge condominiums, and I'm currently serving as president on the Sea Ridge Board of Directors. As you might expect, many of the eighty Sea Ridge owners expressed a desire to provide oral testimony in favor today. However, we recognize the large amount of testimony was already supplied to the planning commission. We are respectful of your time. Therefore, I have attempted to limit today's testimonies to only three Sea Ridge owners, the third of which is me. I want to start by acknowledging the efforts of the Lincoln County Representatives. This application for Goal eighteen exception is extremely important, but unfortunately is also extremely complex. I've been impressed by the activities of Director Ono Husing and his staff and by the Planning Commissioners. I am thankful for the way in which they have devoted their detailed attention to this application. Sea Ridge buildings were developed during the nineteen eighties. At that time, the vegetation line and bluff were much further west than they are now. Today, Sea Ridge is a very different place. We are full-time or part-time residents who have formed a community. We are part of the social and economic fabric of the Depot Bay and Lincoln City areas. Unfortunately, it will take only one large fluke storm to have ocean waves damaging a sewage pump station and threatening the foundation of some of our buildings. In closing, the science is telling all of us that the history and current condition of the Glen Eden and Lincoln Beaches are unique from the rest of the Oregon coast. That uniqueness warrants an exception to the restriction of Goal eighteen. Please vote to let us build a permanent structure protect our and your beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair Hunt, we have Frances Wepler. Frances?
Frances Vanish.
Yeah.
There she is.
I'm here. Thank you.
We hear you.
My name is Frances Wepler. My husband and I have lived in Brownsville, Oregon for over forty-five years inland county. Glen Eden Worldmark is about an hour and a half from us, and it is our second home. We go before COVID and before the closing of the beach, the pool and the hot tub.
Northwest.
There about eight to ten times a year. We now take our grandkids every summer. They're now fourteen and fifteen. They learn to swim there. We walk the beach. My husband's an avid beach walker. I implore this committee to do something soon. I I've listened to all the testimony this time and with the Planning Commission the last time you met. And this is a favorite spot. I have met so many people there over the years that are repeat visitors. They come back from all different states. I see them, they, just like we do, even though we're within the state and and have easy access here. It just breaks my heart to see this erosion happening. One of the things that I feel is extremely important is not only the millions of dollars that will be lost in the properties, but all the revenue that also takes away from all the places that we visit, the restaurants that we go to, the stores, the different events that happen during the beach. I've listed a lot of those in my letter, and I'm sure you have those. But on behalf of my family and the hundreds and hundreds of families that enjoy the Worldmark Glen Eden Beach Resort, I implore you to act quickly before this next winter takes away all of its property. I thank you for letting me speak. I thank the Commission, the Board of Commissions, and the Planning Commission for taking all this time, these countless of hours on our behalf.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Chair Hunt, looks like we have Terry Wagner.
All right.
Terry, you need to look for that unmute button.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. Um, my family has owned property in Glen Eden since nineteen sixty-nine. My husband and I moved there ten years ago, and I'm an employee of Worldmark and have been for nearly ten years. And they're a very good neighbor asset. They always have been. And in my experience in working with them, they've been very good at taking care of the neighborhood, the community volunteering. And in this last year, they've allowed me to donate home goods, linens, coffee makers, things like that to the fire victims in Otis. And so they've been very involved in helping the whole community heal after the big fire just a year ago. So losing them as that asset would be huge. So as a neighbor, I'd like to see him stick around for a while. So if you could vote a yes, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else, Mr. Miller, in favor, in support of the applicants?
I do not see any hand raised, so I have emptied the hand raise queue. So if anyone thinks they might have been passed over, please use the raise the hand function. But from what I can see, everybody has spoken.
Oh, that's that's in favor, that supports.
Wait, yeah. Okay, Amy Marshall, in favor of support, so you have your hand raised. Let's let's check in with her. And you should be unmuted. Amy?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. I thought I had my hand raised earlier. My name is Amy Marshall. I'm the General Manager of the Worldmark Resorts in Glen Eden Beach and Depot Bay. I've worked for our organization for as long as I can remember, a little over twenty years, started my on the Washington coast in a little town called Ocean Park, Washington. I've been here in the community since two thousand thirteen, but I moved back to the Oregon coast to manage the two properties here. And I'm very proud of our resort there in Glen Beach and our participation in the community. I think you've heard from a couple of our owners and a couple of my team members. I'm, you know, proud to work for our organization, and I thank you, folks, for your time today. And I hope that you will grant the exception to the Goal eighteen and allow us to protect our resort and continue providing great vacations for our owners and jobs for our employees in the community. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in favor in support of the applicants?
Don't see any hands raised at the moment.
All right, I'm going to suggest that maybe we recess for a few minutes, and let's come back at two fifty-five, if that's agreeable to my fellow commissioners. All right, I show right now it is two forty-nine. We will reconvene at two fifty-five. Until then, we are in recess.
Hey. I got a donut in my mouth, so. No, no, the the one thing that Megan said was, I hope there's nothing in John O'Leary's spam box.
Hey, Ono.
Yeah, hang on a second.
Just just saying, you might want to mute.
Yeah, Will Rasmus had just heard me and realized I was on the open mic here, and he said, make sure you're mute.
You're still not muted.
I'm still muted, not muted.
There you go. Casey, thank you again for upgrading those slides. That was helpful.
No problem.
Hey, this is Dennis. I'm not sure why I didn't appear on screen. I thought I had followed the steps, but that's okay. It just means I put my tie on in vain.
Well, I can, I can bring you in. If you still want your shot, I can bring you over.
No, that's okay. I'll 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 just be 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 in the background here.
Okay. I just thought you were trying to be special, Dennis.
No, no, I I I found, actually, I just brought a shirt and tie, and then I found they hadn't thrown out the old sports coats downstairs. I left for him to donate to Goodwill, so I even had a sports coat here.
All right. Well, I show it's two fifty-five, and I will reconvene this public hearing and remind everyone that it is being recorded, and we are live on YouTube. All right, we recessed at the conclusion of testimony in favor of the applications. And at this point, we'll move on to receive any testimony in opposition to the applications. And if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition, please raise your hand, and Mr. Miller will coordinate your opportunity to speak to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, I'm watching, looking for one of those hand raises. Okay, I'm watching, looking for one of those hand raises, but I think we we appear not to have any in opposition. Maybe one last call.
Well, I'll wait just a few more seconds. And gives me an opportunity to catch up on my notes and where we are. All right, I do not see anyone that has indicated they wish to speak in opposition to the applications. And therefore, we do not need to have rebuttal to the applications. And I have not heard anything to ask for the to keep the hearing open or to provide additional information for the record. So I am going to close the record and then we will move on to deliberation. All right, the record is closed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just can you confirm that, Mr. Husing, that you have not received anything that you're aware of?
Good point.
You're moot.
I'm can you hear me now or am I muted?
You're good now.
Okay. No, we haven't received anything.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, I think we're I think we're good to go to close the record and and thank you.
Okay, therefore, as Chair of the Board, I close the record on these applications. So the next step is for deliberation by the Commissioners and I'll see who would like to go first. Commissioner Hall.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I appreciate the testimony today. I appreciate the voluminous files and I don't want to keep anybody in suspense, so I'm going to say that I am going to end up voting in favor of all three of these requests for a goal 18 decision exemption, though I do so with decidedly mixed feelings. I mean, the fact that this is a historically unique situation, a situation that doesn't exist anywhere else on the Oregon coast and therefore will not be setting a precedent. Helps make me feel better about doing that, but not really wonderful about it. I don't like empathy for people whose homes are threatened by erosion. For most of us, our home is the greatest investment of our life. I know that many family memories have been made at these properties and some of them are helping to fill our desperate need for affordable housing. But I also have to keep in mind that we are stewards of an absolutely precious and unique resource, not only here, but throughout the world. And that is the Oregon coast. And you can't put a dollar sign on that. That is something that's absolutely a value that's beyond calculation. As I reviewed the rather voluminous case file, the record from the Planning Commission, I could see that the situation we're at today is the result of decades and decades of mistakes. I would like to know who in 1965 thought that allowing mining of beach sand was a good idea. The terrible irreversible damage has been done to this beach and it kind of leaves me heartsick to know that we're being encouraged to vote for these exemptions because the damage that's been done to this beach is already irreversible. So you know, I'll just reemphasize, I think the bar for a goal exception under the state land use planning system, as some of our speakers have said, is extremely high, but the unique circumstances of these three applications, in my opinion, do meet that threshold. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Hunt. Yeah, I guess generally speaking, I'm not a fan of rip rap. My master's degree was in coastal zone management. Part of it was on rip rap. I'm generally not a fan. Rip rap does not save properties, not in the long run. Temporarily it does, but as one of my professors would say, rip rap is temporary, the ocean's permanent. So, you know, can it save them temporarily? You know, likely, but rip rap, rip wrapping the whole coast is not a solution. And as we see more climate change and impacts of sea level rise, we're going to see more and more requests of this and you know, at some point, no amount of rip rap is going to be able to hold back the ocean, nor should we attempt to hold back the ocean with rip rap. So, you know, like I said, generally not a fan. I feel like temporarily this is a solution, but again, going forward into the sea level rise and climate change conditions, we're seeing, we're going to have a lot more of these conversations. And at some point, we, much larger than this request today, we're going to have to have other conversations in the state about moving properties because we're not going to be able to save them all, nor should we down the line. We can't rip rap the entire shore. You know, that being said, I do feel like with the very specific rules we have in place for properties that are allowed and if they meet those criteria, I feel like they do meet that threshold and that's the task today is determining if those properties in this request meets the threshold, and I believe they do. So, you know, I'll be voting yes, but I just want to say that we need to have larger conversations in Oregon about this because this isn't the long term answer. It's the it's the tool we have today. It's not the tool that we need for the future.
All right, thank you. I will be voting in favor also. I think that the information presented clearly indicates this is a unique situation. The fact that the goal 18 exception process does allow for exceptions, if I believe one of the speakers said that if this isn't a situation that qualifies for an exception to goal 18, then there probably aren't any. That resonates with me. I think that the fact that frankly, there's been relatively limited opposition. We certainly heard none today. And on top of that, there seems to be support from LCDC, other state agencies and certainly broad support from frankly, some organizations that maybe more traditionally or historically would be opposed. So I think this is a unique situation. It does meet the criteria for a goal 18 exception and I'll be voting in favor of it. Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct something you said and while we didn't have public comment, you know, virtually in opposition, there was some information in the packet.
No, I I'm aware of that.
Okay.
I said verbal, there was opposition, but nobody spoke today in opposition.
Okay, sorry, didn't catch that piece. Thank you.
Well, I tried to be very clear, but maybe I misstated. No, there was opposition in the packet. There obviously was opposition before the commission, Planning Commission. But there was no verbal opposition expressed today during this public hearing. Commissioner, Councilor Herbage, I saw you turn your microphone on.
Yeah, I just did that because I was trying to drown out some noise, but and then I turned it on because the noise got drowned out. But basically, if the board is done deliberating, you can entertain a motion. What I would say is you should have a motion for each of three different applications. And so, okay.
Well, I'll I'll start the process. We need three applicator, three motions, one for each case. So I'll start. And I move to approve application case file number 01 LU PC dash 21 for comprehensive plan amendment to adopt an exception to statewide planning goal 18 implementation requirement five and in accordance with the ordinance and detached findings that are part of the board packet for this meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Somebody else want to do number two or I'll do number two?
Go for it.
Go for it.
I move to approve application case file number 02 LU PC dash 21 for a comprehensive plan amendment to adopt an exception to statewide planning goal 18 implementation requirement number five in accordance with the ordinance and detached findings that are part of the board packet for this meeting.
I will second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye. Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. All right, last one. I move to approve application case file number 03 LU PC dash 21 for a comprehensive plan amendment to adopt an exception to statewide planning goal 18 implementation requirement five in accordance with the ordinance and detached findings that are part of the board packet for this meeting.
I'll second the motion.
I guess we'll say Commissioner Hall for the record. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. All right. I guess I didn't close the public hearing, so the public hearing is now closed. All right.
You you did previously close the hearing. You said the board's made the oral motion. We have various attorneys representing the applicants on board. We may need to have a brief dialogue, but it strikes me that might be good to make sure everything's in order and to reconvene to actually sign off on the written ordinance with findings. And that could be done in short order. It could be done, well, I don't know. That's what I'd like to hear input from them, but possibly within the week, maybe at the next board meeting. Could we hear some input on that?
I'll let them go ahead.
That seems entirely appropriate, you know. I don't think we need to spend too much time on it because there's such extensive findings already prepared from the Planning Commission process. I think this would largely just be adding, you know, a couple of pages, maybe recognizing this process and the additional time that the Board of Commissioners put in. And a couple small kind of procedural things that I think Stephen Lighty emailed about about kind of language in it, but I would anticipate if, you know, if we got back here next week, we could have something that would be more than sufficient to conclude this process.
This is Dennis Bartoldis. I also agree. I reviewed the, I know that Jerry had made a couple revisions to the ordinance based on some input he received from Mr. Lighty, who's with Mr. Rasmussen's office, and those changes looked satisfactory to us. And so I would agree with Mr. Rasmussen, just updating the findings to include the hearing at the Commissioners, County Commissioners, and then I think we're good to go. Obviously, for our client, this is very, very time sensitive. And as soon as this is adopted, we'll be showing up in the Planning Department, asking to have the compatibility statement signed so we can walk that, literally walk that or drive it down to state parks.
Hi, this is David Phillips. For the record, agreed on the final process to adopt the ordinances and Jerry, let us know if you see anything else that we need to address.
Thank you very much. To the board, first of all, I'd ask that it probably doesn't need to be done this way, but I think it's good because the record's closed and the board's so moved. But let's go ahead and have a motion to have this on the board agenda for your next meeting, which is on September 15th at 10 a.m.
I'll make a motion to have this on our next Board of Commissioners meeting agenda, which is Wednesday, September 15th, 2021 at 10 a.m.
I second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Oh, sorry, I thought I said aye, aye.
I didn't hear you. If you did, but then, you know.
And I might have said it at exactly the same time.
Well, that could well be anyhow. For the record, it was unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. And what I would say while we're still on board here is to the attorneys and Mr. Rasmussen, thank you for your participation. And I think it would be very good that when we're done here this afternoon, you coordinate with Anno Husing in his office to make sure that a final product is available. We do have a meeting on Wednesday. That means that this is a rush, but in a way, as you said, the product is largely finished. I think that there should be a few touches recognizing what went on today. And we need to have probably what's going to be finally approved, hopefully to us by, I don't know, probably Monday early, I'm guessing, but ordinarily, we, this will be on the agenda. We'll direct Kristi Peter put on the agenda for Wednesday, but we need to include this in the packet and the board needs to have a chance to review it before they convene on Wednesday morning.
So I can commit to coordinate with Anno either later today or Friday and get a kind of a tight additional findings, recognizing the process from today, adopting the Planning Commission's findings to you and Anno by Monday morning.
Okay.
Yeah, and of course Jerry is going to be involved. So, right, it's not just me, but just so everybody understands that.
I I thank everyone and appreciate it, okay?
All right, that concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. The next item on the agenda would be any public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to offer public comment? Casey?
Chair Hunt, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
All right, and at our next board meeting, we'll cover any public comment that's been received by the county through smart sheets or other media since our Board of Commissioners meeting yesterday. So if there's no more business to come before the board, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lincoln County.
For all your work.
Yeah, in the middle of a pandemic, getting this kind of a hearing done is is commendable. So thank you very much, county team, for getting it done.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, everybody who was involved.